Order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the good and justice of God.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. I know I'm ten pounds heavier. And, uh, yeah, for sure. We all saw our dysfunctional families, you know? All that's good stuff. It's always fun. Alright, roll call, please.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Arty Brison.
Here.
Kristy Hilton, here. Crystal Regan.
Here.
Sandy Kupko.
Here.
Hey, we're all here. I'd like to make a amendment to the agenda and add, uh, new business, uh, number three, part-time dispatcher, Nicholas Ingle, new hire.
Is that motion?
That's a motion. Motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving right along, I will entertain a motion for bills payable.
I will make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of eighteen thousand?
Uh-uh.
Twenty. Twenty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. Support.
Mull with twice. Okay, we have motion support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify. No, roll call.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Arty Brison?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton, yes. Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kupko?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Okay.
Alright, motion passes. For both amounts. Uh, supervisors report. I, uh, actually, I was gone on vacation last week and got back at two thirty a.m. this morning. So I was gone for a week. And so I always do, we start by high water report. Our current status, our current levels, we're, the river is, is basically at five seventy-seven feet above sea, uh, sea level. It's been flat. And we are actually down about a foot and a half from the high that we experienced this year. Don't let your, your guard down. Actually, the level we're at right now is equal to the high of our, our high water, high of two thousand and eighteen. So put in respective, it, or perspective, uh, and we thought in two thousand and eighteen that was high water, so. Um, I did get an update today from the NOAA forecasters on our weather. And, um, they, uh, this is about a week old, but they, uh, they're forecasting a warmer than normal December and about average precipitation for December. For January, it's going to be colder than normal, uh, as far as temperatures and normal precipitation. But he's got a footnote on there. He says way they figure it out with the water, uh, temperatures and oceans and stuff, there's a good chance that a lot of our, our storms that we normally get will be pushed actually south of us. And if that happens, that will be a, a plus for us. Um, I think we had a front go through a couple of days ago. I headed in Finley, uh, last night driving here. We were, it was snowing in Finley, but I got up here and we were, we were dry, so, you know, that's what he's, uh, he's kind of forecasting that, that could be a definite, uh, advantage in, in January. And February, they're normal temperatures and precipitation, so, um, at least they're not higher, uh, going forward as far as the forecast, but as I say, I don't want to, uh, have anyone leave, put their guard down. I know we certainly aren't. I've actually, I talked to, uh, today to both of our state reps about, um, you know, doing some advanced measures, uh, to, to help with flood mitigation. Again, about, uh, the possibility of some type of a temporary no wake. Uh, I know the governor shot our, uh, our, um, emergency ma, uh, requests, emergency relief quests, requests down. But they are looking at some type of legislation where to give the DNR a, a advance, uh, or, um, emergency authority to be able to do that and some other things, but there, i- i- it's, it's a sticky situation, because, you know, you give them the authority to do something, it's hard to take the authority away from them. And, uh, but they're, they're, they're trying to work something out, so the DNR legislatively, so the DNR might have enough juice to actually do that if it's needed next year. We're not sure. We're, we're working that out. Not sure if that will happen. And also, we're talking about some type of advanced measures where we can get some, uh, dirt for, uh, berms and stuff over to Harson's Island, the other islands be, because, you know, the problem with the ferry taking trucks over there. So I did have those conversations, uh, actually today. Just to let the board know, our furnace in the office, uh, took a dump this last week. And Cindy called me up. We got three quotes and we took the lowest quote. It's being fixed now. It's going to be about twenty-five hundred bucks. Also, I did receive notice today that, uh, Harson's Island ferry rates are going to be going up. Um, I haven't actually seen the actual tariff yet, but it's roughly two bucks a round trip for cars for eat, with tickets and round trip. I did ca, call the state plate police today, who's their regulatory body. And they actually said, they actually improved a five-dollar increase, because that's what, uh, the state-owned ferries up in Upper Peninsula are going to be doing. But, uh, uh, they decided to do a, a two-dollar, um, increase. And, um, I also did get a commitment, because I asked about, you know, what's, what's the deal with the docks and taking heavier loads? And I did get a commitment that they will be able to bring higher or, or heavier loads across either before or by May first. So, um, like I say, I, we got a commitment for that. And I don't know, I myself would like to see the rate increase held off until that, the dock was done, but, uh, you know, that's not my decision. And I, I, I have a, you know, it's like, you wanna, you got, you're charging some people something before they receive the benefits. A little hard, a pill hard to swallow sometimes. But that's what it is. Uh, you know, the township has very little, um, little, um, to do with that. It's a private business. Uh, still been, uh, the last two weeks working on bonding out our MERS. And, um, we will, we'll have something to look at probably in, uh, May or June, how, how that works. You know, we have to get our actuaries done. And that takes about four or five months. And you have to pay for that to, to have done. Well, we get a free one at the end of December anyhow. So I could have paid like three grand to have one done, but it would only save us three, three, two, three weeks. And we usually receive those in, uh, in May. And that, that's the thing, you know, with MERS, you ask them a question, well, we'll get, you, you, it takes four or five months to get an answer. So, um, but we, I decide we'll just wait to that and then we'll, uh, we'll get going on that. And we'll probably have something for the board to look at in, you know, probably in June. Um, still been working on the sewer interceptor issues. I know OHM did their inspection. Now they're, uh, went back to the, their office and, uh, compiling all the information that they put together. And they'll be giving us a report here soon. And also with wastewater treatment plan issues, I got a meeting, uh, Thursday on that. And about doing a, a long-term, uh, um, agreement with us, Ira and Clay and the, the county with that. Uh, going out getting garbage bids. I, I know I got, we'll have at least three bids, uh, for our garbage contract. And still working with Comcast extending our broadband where we don't have it in DTE and with, uh, street lightings. And, uh, oh, I, I was talking to, um, our planner and a couple of folks in the planning commission about the possibility of having another joint meeting this January, February. They would like our input on the boathouse ordinance and, uh, maybe a couple of other things. And I told them if we do that, I'd like to also have a report, report on the progress of our, um, our master plan on it too. So, uh, I, I think all the boards kind of enjoyed that when we did it last time. And, uh, so I'll, uh, we'll try to put something together in January and Feb, or February for that. And other than that, we have lots of, uh, uh, rec programs going on. If you, uh, if you're on Facebook, like us at Clay Township, um, Parks and Rec, and all the information is there. If not, call Cindy in our billing department or anybody else. And we have all kinds of, of fun stuff going on this winter. That's it. So, other than that, let's see. Supervisor. Next, we have public comments. Any public comments?
Good evening. Bill Greatup, ninety-two hundred North River Road. I'm your St. Clair County Commissioner. Uh, just wanted to stop in, uh, to say a Merry Christmas, uh, and Happy New Year to Arty and the entire board. Also to all of our first responders. Uh, it looks like it's been a pretty good year this year. Uh, company, our people look, uh, happy. They look healthy, except for the Harson's Island ferry, of course. But, uh, really not a whole lot to complain about this year. A little bit of high water, but, uh, most of these people have been through it before. And if it comes again this year, uh, I'm sure they're going to be prepared. I've talked to an awful lot of people. They were upset. And now they're just kind of resigned to the fact that it's coming back again. So I'm thinking it's going to go a lot smoother, Arty, so, uh, don't worry too much about it. But, uh, to everybody and, and to all the citizens in Clay, uh, have, please a, a Merry Christmas and a happy and safe, uh, New Year.
Alright, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
You too.
Hey.
Merry Christmas.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. I'm Harold Steber from Harson's Island St. Clair Flats Committee. I'm one of the new members of the Government Affairs Committee of the association.
Lucky you.
Taking over for Pat. So, and George Cavell, our president, is also on that committee. Just two issues I have in front of us tonight. I just got this property tax bill and I'm just not quite sure. It's only twenty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. And there's no millage on it, obviously, but I don't know what exactly it covers or what it's for. So I know how to account for it. So.
Well, we'll see you after.
Okay, I can talk about it after. Not a big deal.
Right.
But I just.
Is it for you or the association?
No, the association.
Okay.
For the association.
Okay.
So, okay. Second subject is what you already, you know, I, uh, hopped on already, which is about the ferry, you know? Social media's blowing up over this issue and I have to bring something back to address it. And what you're basically saying is I can't complain to you because there's nothing you said you could do about it. I mean, it's a twenty-eight percent increase. I mean, nobody gets that in wages or cost of living. I mean, we get a one-point-six increase in social security, but twenty-eight percent increase in ferry fares. Service has gone down because me, for example, I need some yard work done. I need to have more riprap brought over. He can't bring it over because the ferry won't let him. So service has gone down, rates have gone up. So, I mean, what am I supposed to tell my constituents over there? We can't, the township can't do anything, right?
Well, we, we don't, we don't govern the ferry or...
And we can't look at, you know, whether he's making or, because he's not a public thing. He's a private corporation. So we're screwed. And you're acknowledging we're screwed, right? I mean.
I mean, the township doesn't regulate that anymore than it regulates, uh, what they, you spend for beer at the San Souci bar.
So, I'm just venting.
Twenty-eight. Yeah, we, we, we got twenty percent. I don't know where twenty-eight is, but.
Forty dollars increase over a hundred and forty-dollar book. That's twenty-eight and a half percent. So, that's where that came from.
Okay.
So. Lot of shit's going on over there. Shit's going to come down somewhere. But, okay. Alright, I'll just pass that on. Township can't do anything.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, thanks.
Harold, are you officially taking over for Pat? Or, excuse me?
I'm a member of the Government Affairs Committee.
Right.
And there's three people on that. George is one of them. And myself. And Pat's moved on.
Like normally I send Pat our agenda?
Yeah, if you could forward that to George or myself or all of us.
Okay.
I'll give you our email addresses and.
Okay. That's, that's why I was asking.
We need to contact, Pat was supposed to get with you to tell you to forward it.
He may have over the last five or six days. I'm still catching up with my email from being off last week with the holidays.
Okay.
But I.
Okay. He was supposed to get.
I haven't seen it yet, but.
That's why we haven't gone, gone to you directly. He said he was going to take care of it, but.
We'll get it straight now.
Okay. I'll see you after the meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comments?
So I'm George Cavell. I'm the president of Hisfa on, uh, on the island. Uh, just to, uh, expand on what Harold mentioned, uh, the, the book holder, the, the book ticket holders are, their rates going up twenty-eight percent. The people who do not have, do not buy the ferry tickets, their rates going up twenty percent. And it's the, the book holders who are primarily the landowners and users, the people on the island that are paying the taxes. The people that are coming over for a fun weekend are getting a little bit of a break, like eight percent. And they pay nothing for what they get off of us. So I think the, I think the imbalance is, or the balance is backwards. If you're gonna, I mean, pick a number, but if you're going to come over and go to Joby Noonar or go to the, the Raftoff or do whatever you do that causes police and EMS issues, charge the people that are, that are, that are bringing those. And shift the rates, raise ours a buck, raise theirs three dollars. They won't care. They're still going to come over and party, so. I just think there's a, there's a fairer way and a more reasonable way to do it. Because it's ultimately going to be reflected in your tax revenue. People are going to go. And I've had people approach me, well, you'd love to live on the island, but we work every day, so it's seven bucks. Now it's nine bucks. We'll go somewhere else.
Has, has anyone contacted the state police who regulates them?
We will be.
Okay. Cause like I say, the ferry doesn't regulate, never has, never did. The, 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 or the township never regulated the ferry.
Right. I understand.
Or, or even the county. I mean, we've gotten involved a little bit, uh, Bill and I, this is years ago, to, uh, to a possibility of, uh, getting, uh, some grant money through, uh, the, uh,
Blue Water.
Blue Water Transportation to help subsidize, you know, the ferry, the operations part of it. And that didn't fly. Um, actually, Hisfa objected that strongly. I'm not sure why, but it was. I think we're getting free money here. But, uh.
Well, that's history. Today is, today is twenty-eight percent, so.
Right, so.
So maybe there's a better way to go about it.
Yeah.
And we'll, uh, we'll approach the state and see what we can do. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thanks. Maybe we can get a hold and see if, uh, there's anything available with Blue Water Transportation Authority again. So it might be a good time. Alright, any other public comments?
Roland Brett, Harson's Island, two, two Williams. Um, I want to find out about, um, all the parking sign, no parking out at the turnaround. Like John Manos told me years ago that there was supposed to be like four parking spots out there. I'd like to get it changed, because it's just staying, no parking, no parking. You can't, like, you pull over, take pictures of the sun going down or something like that, or the... I just don't think it's right to not be able to spend fifteen minutes out there, fifteen-minute parking or a half-hour parking. You know, uh, I know I net minnows out there in the summer and, um, little Hotchkiss guy, big Hotchkiss boy, he, you know, he, he ain't got no money either and, uh, he, he nets some minnows out there and, and we get run out of there. We get told, like I got told by the Border Patrol. I, I was just going out there to throw my line a couple of times. There's a couple bass holes that I like. And I just want to catch dinner and then go home, you know, for fifteen minutes or whatever. And then I'm out of there. Well, he told me to get out of there, you know, uh, if I had a ticket booked, I'd write you a ticket. You see them signs, no parking? Well, I'd like to see that changed, you know, like fifteen-minute parking or something, a half-hour parking. So people can go down there and, and take a few pictures and, and look at Detroit. It's, it's beautiful view and stuff. So anyway, that's what I want to try to get rid of them park, no parking signs. Maybe fifteen-minute, half-hour parking or something. So then, with that, all along the side of the road, it's no parking along the one fifty-four, along the side of the road. We're, we have, again, no parking, but people stop there and fish and, you know, and it's nice to, because there's a lot of bluegill at different times. There are a lot of perch in the spring. And for us people that live there, we want to catch a few fish to put in our freezer so we can be prepared for the next couple meals and stuff. Well, now with me just getting a ticket for other stuff, I'm a scared to park there and fish. Because the police office is going to give me a ticket, another ticket, another hundred-dollar ticket for parking there. And it, I can't see it all the time. So along that road, there's people parked there, so the police will have to decide who can park there and who can't. Well, that's not right on the police department. It's not fair for them to have to decide who can park there or who not. We got to arrange some way, there can be some parking for us people that live there, pay taxes and stuff. It's not really fair, you know? Um, you got two little turnouts there, but that's, I don't know, it's just not where all the fish are. So then, alright, that's parking there along that road. Well, now I'm figuring, um, at La Croix, coming out of town at La Croix. It's a stop sign there. Well, you're, you come out of town and that stop sign, it should be a yield of right-of-way. It should not be a stop sign. You're wasting gas and stopping. Please give me a ticket for, cause, and everybody runs through it. I can, I can show you pictures and I can catch a lot of people if I wanted to be like that.
It's not, it's not purely a suggestion?
Pardon?
It's not purely a suggestion?
Well.
It's only between Memorial Day and Labor Day.
And so, you know, coming into town, they don't have no bearing on it. But going out that, that way, you're looking to your right, I mean, to your left, and you can see all the cars coming for a long ways there. And same by the water station. And the, you could go as far out as, um, by Lindkey's place there. But more looking to your left. Now looking to your right, you got to look over who's in your car and stuff. That might be a little different in a yield situation, like going south on one fifty-four. It would, it would be a different thing because you got to look over your, your passengers and stuff in order to see. But anything going out of town there, you, you don't have no obstruction. You shouldn't have to stop and start all over and waste the gas and, and shift your motor and all that. So them are all, only ones I wanted to comment about.
Okay, they, they aren't, uh, they aren't township roads. They're county roads.
Right.
So we have very little jurisdiction over them.
Okay.
But, uh, and M one fifty-four, that's a state road.
Well, I called Clay, or I called St. Clair County and I, and I talked to the road commission guy. But I don't have the pull, as our board should have a pull. I'm just a little old rolling here that lives on Harson's Island. I had to fight with the chickens, you know? You got me all involved and.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can suggest, but, uh, you know, like, there, we have some roads where I think the speed limit should be lower. And, yeah, we, we don't have any juice. Mike, did you want to say something or?
Well, the only thing I want to comment is the no parking signs. And, and I get what you're saying there. Especially the turnaround. And the reason those signs were put up was back when the water was low, very low. That's where everybody was coming to get out to the water. So they would park and they would just bottleneck every weekend in that, that turnaround. So where people like yourself, you couldn't even get in there.
Right.
And that's why they went up. I know as far as us, I don't think we've written any tickets other than if it's Joby Noonar or the Raftoff and that. That's one we have, because we're getting all these people that are coming in, trying to park along these areas and then walk out to these events. And that's the thing that we can't allow.
Then we should have fifteen-minute parking or half-hour parking.
Which is something we could do, but then it's limiting you as, I'm a resident to that. Where our guys are really, you know.
But I get to fish for a few minutes and then I'm gone.
And, and, and I'll tell anybody, if you're parked over there to go fishing and one of our guys writes you a chicken ticket, you come and see me.
I promise I'll try to.
That's not why we're, that's not, unless you're parked in an area that might be, uh, a traffic hazard.
Right.
Uh, here, if you're far enough off the road and we see that, especially in the springtime.
Well, that's when I don't want a ticket.
You see, you see everybody parked to fish. And we get that. That's the one. And as long as you're not, as long as you're not, because in all honesty, when you get some of the hotspots for fishing, it's the only time when it was a problem, you get people to start trying to park pretty deep and then they're into the road. But you can't have that, obviously.
Right.
But we have not written any parking tickets and only for the events, pretty much.
As far as the no parking signs on M one fifty-four, they went up, if my memory serves me right, in the mid-seventies. And that was because we had a lot of people fishing, you know, on, on the canals. And that was, that was from the request of the island residents. Why those no parking signs back then?
And, and really, in all actuality, I mean, the, the signs are there to, to help the island, island residents out. And I know our guys know enough that, listen, if you're an island resident, you're over there, you're throwing a pole out, you're fishing and that. They're not going to give you a hard time. Like I say, if you get a hard time when you're sitting there parked far enough off the road not to obstruct anything, I'll take care of that.
I don't think you give anyone a hard time for fishing.
Well.
No, and it, and it all comes down to a lot of the events and that that we have. We, we really had a lot of problems.
Alright, that's all I got.
Alright, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of November eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and check reports.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any questions or anything that needs to be pulled out? Not hearing any. Uh, we have, uh, motion support. All in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we have our fire chief report.
Good evening. Uh, chief's report for November. I attended two meetings in the month of November. I attended the, uh, North Channel Homeowners Association on the island and the chief's, uh, county chiefs meeting up in St. Clair County. Fireboat two is pulled out, so we do not have a boat in water. That will be, uh, winterized and shrink wrapped, and then we'll store it behind the station. If we need it, then we can use it. PMs were done on all the vehicles. Excuse me. And, uh, they started to work on station two's vehicles also to do the PMs and safety checks. Uh, some of the repairs were done. Engine two, parking brake was repaired. Some piping was fixed on the pump. Alternator was replaced, a temp gauge, and the PM safety checks were done on that vehicle. Tango three had an alternator that we had to replace. Of course, the PM and safety checks were done. Utility two had to replace the belt tensioner. And we had some coolant leaks, found some loose clamps. And the safety checks and PMs were done, done on that. Engine four, um, we used, we had a, uh, check, uh, engine light on that. And we found out that it was an oil sensor light, or oil sensor. So they replaced that. They took care of that problem. And, uh, the PM safety checks were done on that vehicle. Water two, uh, the safety checks and PMs were done on that. I need to make an appointment with Freightliner. The vehicle over forty-five miles an hour sways back and forth. And it has an airbag suspension on the rear. We don't know if the tires are towed out. So what's causing that to sway back and forth, but I need to have that done by Freightliner.
They might have looked at that already at one time.
Yep. I know they've been having problems with it and it's unsafe to go over. I've got a speed limit of forty-five on it. No more than that. Uh, engine three, uh, that one has not been done yet. That has, uh, check engine lights come on. The computer was replaced with a new one. And it's still throwing some codes up. Uh, that was done in the past. So, um, Michigan Apparatus, he's trying to diagnose it right now. And if we get it fixed, we should probably have a meeting on what we want to do with that truck if we get it fixed. So.
What chief is trying to tell us, if you get it fixed, so all the lights are off, we think we should sell it now.
So, yep. So, yep. If we get it fixed, get rid of it. So, and that's it.
Do you order a couple of trucks?
Uh, we will, next week.
Okay. Alright, anything for the chief?
Yeah, do you want to cover this, uh, chief, the, uh, stats for the, uh, fire and EMS?
I don't have that in front of me.
Oh, okay, alright.
I can if you want.
No problem. Well, we talked about it earlier, so, okay. Thank you.
Alright, anything else for the chief? Thanks a lot, George. Alright, uh, moving to new business, we have our audit, our report card came in and Tammy's here, she's gonna go over it with us.
Good evening, everyone. I am Tammy Pittsir from Stewart, Bouvet and Whipple. I'm the audit senior. I passed out earlier, we have a burgundy cover binder. This is the official audit report. But I did also pass out a presentation that kind of summarizes what's in this big binder, so we're not going to go through it page by page. We did sit down with management earlier and went through it for a couple of hours, so we spent some time digging into it. So on the very first page of the audit presentation, number one, it talks about the independent auditor's report. So when you do open this binder, it's going to be one of the first letters in the report and it's on Stewart, Bouvet and Whipple's letterhead. And pretty much what it tells you is that you had an unmodified or a clean opinion. So the opinion is the same opinion that you've had for quite a few years and it's the best opinion that you could obtain. So that's a good thing. And the second part of the binder that I passed out includes the management discussion and analysis of the M D and A report. And what that is, is a quick synopsis of everything that's in the letter, kind of telling the reader what's going on in the township and breaks it down into very summarized details. The third item on this audit presentation gets into the financial statements themselves. The financial statements are broken into two sets of financial statements. There's the township-wide financial statements and then there's the fund financial statements. The township-wide statements, it brings the township into more of a commercial set of way of looking at the financial statements. Where the fund financial statements are the modified accrual or accrual basis of accounting and that's kind of the way that the township has always looked at the financials. So at the bottom of the very first page, it talks about the general fund and the balance sheet of the general fund. And these numbers are comparative for two thousand and nineteen, this is as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and compares it to June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen. So you see the general fund had total assets of two million nine eighty-three, five seventy-seven with liabilities of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. So fund balance was two million, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. And then down below that, you can see the change in the fund balance. So this tells you what your total revenues were, your total expenditures, any other financing sources or uses for a change in fund balance, and this is revenues over expenses for the year in the general fund of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. And you can see that compared to two thousand and eighteen, it actually went up from a hundred and sixty thousand, six forty-one. Page two, kind of the same information for revenues, expenses and changes in fund balance for all of the special revenue funds of the township. So this includes the fire fund, the police fund, the rubbish collection, drug enforcement fund, drug forfeiture fund, the Oak Lawn Cemetery Fund, Music in the Park, which is a new fund for the township this year, the Road Canal Maintenance Fund, the Parks and Rec Fund and the Frag Might Program Fund. So you can see that each of these change in fund balances. And then below that are the same funds, the special revenue funds and what their ending fund balance numbers were at the end of June thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen compared to eighteen. So you can see if they went up or down. The bottom of this page, item C, the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, these items are restricted funds. Back in the day, you used to have a perpetual fee that was charged to, um, purchase a lot in the cemetery. So this money is considered non-spendable funds. So you can see the total revenue and then your total change in fund balance. Page three is your debt service fund. So this is your Colony Road Assessment Fund. And this fund collects special assessment revenues. There's a bond that's almost paid off, it's being paid out of this fund. And then there's a transfer into this fund, so there's actually a change in fund balance of only thirteen dollars this year. Item E is your enterprise funds or your water supply and sewage disposal funds. And then you can see down below there, the statement of revenue expenses and changes in net position. So with the water fund and the sewer fund, it shows what your total operating revenues were, expenses. It talks about the depreciation expense for the year, which is actually a non-cash item. And then what this does is it gets you down to your change in net position. So you'll see that the water fund actually had a gain in the year for one million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight ninety-five and the sewer fund had a loss of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, ninety-two dollars. But you have to remember when you're looking at the water and sewer funds, because they are enterprise funds, the depreciation is a non-book entry, there's items in there like, um, debt proceeds, there's special assessment revenue that runs through these funds. There's various other items that are non-cash related or, or not included in the statement of activities. So the second part of this page, number two, where it says cash results, it kind of reconciles your net position change back to what the actual cash change was. I know it's a little bit confusing and there's quite a few items that are taken into effect here. But you see for the water fund, the true cash result for the year was a gain of about three hundred and eighty thousand, nine eighty-five and the sewer fund was a gain of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine eighty-nine. And then on page four is the net working capital. So people always ask, so what do we have to spend out of that fund? So if you look at what your total current assets were and then you subtract from that your current liabilities, that gives you what we call your net working capital, or if you wanted to go out and do a project, how much money you had left in each of those funds. So the water fund had three million, eight hundred, or three million, eight thousand, five hundred and, or nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, sorry. And then the sewer fund had eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one thirty-one. Any thoughts, comments, questions on any of those numbers? Each of these items too, we tried to reference to different pages in this audit binder that you can kind of go back and look them up and see where they're at and where they can be found. And then in addition to this audit binder, we did issue two other reports. One is the independent auditor's report on internal control and then the other one is the audit communication letter. The first independent control, um, or internal control report, the only item that was noted in that was a comment about, um, drafting the financial statements. And that comment's very standard in municipalities your size and basically what it says is you don't have anybody on staff to draft the financial statements and that's what you contract with Stewart, Bouvet and Whipple for. Other than that, we had no internal control issues. And then the second letter is our audit communication letter, which is passed out to the board and that is, in case we don't come to a meeting, it kind of highlights some of the key points that are in the audited financial statements. And once again, there's no attachment A, as we like to call it, or other recommendations. There wasn't anything that we noted this year to bring to the board's attention. Any thoughts, comments, questions?
I'd just like to comment, I mean, it's, uh, contribute to this board and actually the board before us when we first got an office of board before us, we had, and before Tammy came on board, we probably had seventy-eight weaknesses that went back to the eighties.
Several pages.
Seven, this letter.
Several pages.
Was seven pages long.
It was, yeah.
And when we had our internal problems, we said, we're gonna clean it up and everyone's saying, I don't think it can be done. Well, it was done. And, uh, yeah. So, and, I mean, I, I think Tammy would agree. I think our, our, the township financially is very healthy and, uh, I think a lot of credit goes to our department heads and, uh, and, uh, our clerk and our tre, our treasurer too.
Management's always very receptive to any of our suggestions and making any improvements in the process and that's really helped to, as Artie said, pull these comments out of the letters. So that's been a very good thing.
But it took a lot of work. About four years ago, we pretty much changed everything, how Clay Township does business. I mean, drastically.
I can attest to that.
You can attest to that, yes. So, I, uh, we probably get this.
Any questions?
Our drug enforcement fund, that was, uh, that's flipped over because of our, uh, our TASER project?
Yes. Yep. You do have a capital lease for the TASERS.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that just had to do with how we, the timing and how we actually put the entries in. We didn't bring in the entry of the loan proceeds, etc.
Right. That's what it is example, yeah. The accounting rules require that if you have a capital lease, it's really a loan proceeds to you. So you not only have the outlay or the cost, but you were technically given the proceeds to purchase them too, because you're paying for it over time. So it's just a timing issue.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? I know I've been staring at these numbers for a while now. Takes a while to adjust, but all in all, you think our, the health of our township's pretty?
Very healthy.
Very healthy.
And if you ever have any questions, feel free to give either myself or Paul Bailey a call and we can discuss it.
We have more copies of this?
We do. Cindy has the box with the extra copies.
Okay. So I don't like some.
I appreciate the pie charts.
You like them? You can see that they didn't differ very much from last year either. No. They're very, very close to what they were last year, which means that you're very consistent in your spending habits.
And truthfully, I was, I was worried about all the money we were spending on helping people with the high water and everything. And.
We didn't have time to spend anything else.
Yeah, we didn't have time to spend anything else, it's true. And for us to, for our general to put two hundred and sixty thousand dollars back into our general fund, I thought.
Well, we never did update our computers, we were supposed to.
No, update our computers, get welcome signs and, and a whole bunch of other stuff, but, um, yeah, it, uh, like I say, I give kudos to our, our department heads.
Now that you brought that up, that is a good point, that as of this point, this was only through June thirtieth, but you did spend seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars on what we refer to as emergency management. But that would be the sandbags and other items for the flooding.
Last year.
That's in here as of June thirtieth. So there were additional costs, I'm sure, from July through.
We spent a little more than that, didn't we?
Today.
Yeah, when you buy six hundred thousand sandbags.
Well, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very much appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Good job.
Do we need to file, accept and file?
I think you should.
Yes. I'll make the motion that we accept and file our audit report as presented.
Support.
Yeah, motion support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Alright, next we have Resolution twenty eighteen dash fifty-one establishing our water rates. And as you see, there is no change in our water rates. And as I mentioned last year, we, they didn't go up last year, they, they're frozen water rates, ha ha pun. And, um, so, and I'm hoping to, to keep that going for a couple of years until Tammy says, eh, you better, you better look at it again. But, um, um, like I say, I, I think we can probably get another couple of years maybe without raising the water rates. And, and we do have probably one of the, I, I remember we did a study two years ago, we had the cheapest water rates in the county and I assume we still are. And I will warn people, our sewer rates will go up because we have sewer issues where, you know, we got, uh, the report, we're gonna, we have interceptor problems. And I bet you that's gonna be a three million dollar, I'm just guessing, a three million dollar price tag. And, uh, and that, that fund isn't as unhealthy as our water, so.
That one comes up in July.
Yeah, that one comes up in July. Why am I talking about now? Because I warn people.
I'll approve our resolution and that's actually two thousand nineteen fifty-one. Establishing water rates of no change.
Fifty-one or twenty-nine?
Is that wrong too?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, last year it was two thousand eighteen fifty-one, so this year it's two thousand nineteen twenty-nine.
Support.
There was no change, so I just pulled the old one. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen twenty-nine, establishing our water rates at no change.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hovin?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Fraschetta?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next we have Police New Hire Part-Time Dispatcher Nicholas Engel, who's stuck around, uh, in for our meeting tonight.
Okay, well, um, we do have Nick here. Uh, he has come, uh, to our department for a part-time dispatch position. As you see, he currently in EMS and firefighting field. Uh, so he's quite proficient as far as radio use and some of the things are gonna help him out a little bit when it comes to our EMD and, and the different, uh, protocols that we use for dispatch. So kind of got one leg up going right there. Um, ambitious young man and, uh, nothing but good to say about him from anybody that we've, uh, talked to on his background investigation, so.
You already had him in doing a little bit and working out well.
Yep.
Where's Nick?
Can we see him?
Nick's right here.
Hey, Nick, we gotta come up, we gotta embarrass you.
Come on up.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Normal.
Today.
Today. Anybody have any questions for Nick? I'm the guy on the hot seat.
Do you have any relatives in the area?
I don't.
Already checked into that one.
Yeah.
Where'd you grow up, Nick?
I grew up in Avoca. It's up towards Yale.
And do you live up there now?
Yes.
Are you familiar with Clay Township area?
Yep, I work down here once or twice a month for tri-hospital EMS part-time.
Perfect. On runs?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to, uh, hire, uh, Nicholas Engel, part-time, uh, police dispatcher.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Good job.
Yeah.
Alright, and for a special treat for you, I have, uh, Steve Matthews here, who was not able to be here when you graciously brought him on board here a couple of meetings ago, so Steve, why don't you stand up for a minute? So you can put a, uh, a face to the voice here when you call in. And, uh, I will say that, uh, I've gotten nothing but good reviews from his trainers and for somebody that's never dispatched before, I don't think we've anybody, have anybody get through the training as quick and as proficient. And we've already had some pretty good incidents, um, since he, he, he went on his own and he's done a fantastic job. I've gotten nothing but good feedback, so appreciate that. Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
It's nice to see you.
Alright, Steve.
Thanks for coming, Steve.
And glad Mike finally hired someone a little taller than you.
Keep it up, Artie. I'm shrinking.
That happens with age.
Alright. Anything else, Mike? Alright, thank you much. Uh, board member comments? Cindy?
I don't have anything tonight. Just welcome the guys. Hope you enjoy your time over at the department. We got a nice group of guys to Whipple, that's for sure.
Just to let everyone know that we're having a planning commission, uh, meeting on December the eleventh. Uh, we have several items of importance, of importance that we'll be discussing, uh, during that time, so it starts at seven PM.
A little sneak preview of?
Let's see, uh, it's, it's important issues, so I'd, I'd encourage, uh, the public to attend if they want to make comments.
You got the blue horseshoe question?
Blue horseshoe, blue horseshoe is one of them, yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Artie, one other thing, I am looking forward to seeing everybody for our Alice training too, right? Yes. Everyone got that memo, right? We're doing.
Just, just come up and talk about that.
Yeah, come on up. Talk about that.
Nice try.
We're almost out of here.
Almost.
Almost.
Well, as you know, um, this is something that we've been working with the schools for quite some time now and actually as a county-wide. for quite some time now, and actually as a countywide project is the, uh, is the Alice program, which is, um, either active shooter or hostile event that's going on. Unfortunately, there's some of the things I think is most important for us to train in, um, with, it's just the sign of the times, unfortunately. And we are at the point now that, you know, we've got everything pretty much in place with the schools. Um, we're doing this in-house training, which is a refresher for a lot of us, but it's going to be new training for a lot of the other people within the township. So, what we're doing now is making sure we got everybody, um, at the next platform of the training within the township itself, and then from there forward, we're going to have a mock training, utilizing everybody from within the, the township, the schools as well, and put on a mock training, you know, so that, God forbid that something does happen. Um, at, at least we've got a good sense of what direction to go in, and, and how that training's going to be put to a practical use, so, uh, that's kind of where we're sitting right now, and that's why I'm looking, you know, hoping that everybody's going to be able to make this. I know, um, we've got a very good response from everybody we've put it out to. I don't think there's been anybody yet that has, uh, said they are not going to be able to make it. I think it'll be good training being put on, both Lieutenant Stockwell and Officer Fahardo are Alice instructors. Uh, not only do they do the training within our township, but they do work with emergency management in St. Clair County as well in this training. Uh, they were also voicestrous in the, uh, passing of the active shooter hostile event, um, curriculum that was put together and is now a, a countywide program that, that we have all signed on with. So, it's just one of those things that, you know, is, uh, right here in front of us, and, and we're going to try to be ahead of it. So, that's what all this comes down to.
Okay, we got two dates this next week, and I know the water department's going to partake, we got some of the firemen.
I'm in.
Yep, so...
I mean, it's just, you know, due to the way you're seeing things unfold now, and it's, it's like anything else. I mean, everything's basically coming from Columbine forward, and you learn from each one of these events by the debriefing, by the different trainings that we go to, and you, you learn to hone the skills of, you know, how should we approach this? And, and, you know, it's like anything else. I mean, anytime something does happen, or even within your training, you find things that work and things that necessarily don't work as well. So, that's why, one, you try to train as much as you can, and anytime you do have any kind of incident, you debrief from it, and, and everybody tries to learn from it at that point. And, and I think since Columbine, we've come a long way as far as this training goes. I know myself, you know, I've been, been doing this since a while before Columbine, and I have seen many methods come and go, and I think where we're sitting right now, uh, guys are really on top of it, and what's nice is they've, they've made it into a curriculum that is a working curriculum. It's, it's not just setting foundation, this is something that's evolving as it goes, so it's never going to be status quo. So, I think that's the best part of it. It, it's constantly moving forward and changing with the times and the needs, so excellent program.
I think, I, I know when I came on board seven years ago, we, as a department, we didn't have the great equipment, the right training, and, and we're, we're leaps and bounds from where we were back then.
Absolutely.
And, uh, as far as, as equipment and training, um, that's, that's...
And the great thing is, our school's on board a hundred percent with us. Um, it, it could not be better there. Uh, the relationship is great, and we work very well together, so that makes it that much easier.
All right, good, thanks.
Thank you.
Where were we, public comments? Joanne?
I, too, would like to welcome the new hires, and, uh, glad to have you with us, and, um, I found what Mike just got up and told, said to be very, very helpful. I've been to one or two trainings, and, and I see what you say, how it evolves, and it changes, and I think it's a very valuable thing for the, for all of us to have.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Sandy?
Just wanted to welcome our new dispatchers to the police department, congratulations. And congrats to management, including all the department heads, on a wonderful audit presentation, and it's definitely a testament to everyone's hard work, so, good job.
Well, I am, uh, I'm thankful. I'm thankful for my family, I'm thankful for our first responders, and I'm thankful that I choose to live in Clay Township. Oh, God.
We're thankful you're here.
Yeah. Thankful for you, too.
Tracy?
I just want to give a Goodfellows reminder. Um, the paper sale is this coming Saturday, the seventh, and we're supposed to also have papers for sale at the counter. Um, there's a bowling fundraiser that helps support the Goodfellows, and that's Sunday, the eighth, and I think it begins at noon. Uh, we have a worming tree in the township office, we're collecting new hats, gloves, socks, and scarves. We have a toy box for new and unwrapped toys, and then we're also doing a change roundup, um, so you can donate your change, or you can send in a check. There have been quite a few, I don't know if Anita told you today, we've gotten quite a few checks, so I, I just want to say thank you so much, we're, we really appreciate the, the checks and things, the donations that people are bringing in.
Cool. Well, it is, and we, we started this about a month, well, six weeks ago or so. Um, if you pay your water bill, or any, any tax bill, or any, anything, uh, if you want to round up, uh, or, or throw in a few extra bucks, we take that and give it to Goodfellows. And, uh, I'm hop, I'm hoping, you know, if we do it for a full year, you know, we